And the Orange Hat Patrol was something that I've heard from many residents now. They don't feel comfortable doing those same kind of functions or activities as what Orange Hat Patrols did in years past. And so, but I also know that there are residents, folks in our communities, that still want to have some type of community policing, want to have some ability to help make our communities safer. And so with all this information in place, I put together a draft, an initial draft of some items that I believe with the help of Robert Oliver, who is the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, we've talked about putting forth. Those items, three basic items, and again, everyone, this is just a draft. Those three basic items, I'm going to, if I can share my screen, I will show that, one second.
Commissioner Fletcher, the one point I wanted to just, and I heard in your statement, you mentioned Mr. Oliver, and so Mr. Oliver is a part of your Public Safety Committee?
Correct, just part of that committee.
Alright, and so he's, you said the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and I just want to make sure that we understand that this Public Safety Committee is a committee of ANC.
Right, absolutely, but in terms of community members, right? The community involvement, Robert Oliver is part of that, I want to be very clear about that. He's not cheering, you know, over me or over you or the ANC, but he is the, the, the community person assisting with developing recommendations for the Public Safety Task Force.
Alright, so you're the Chair, and he is one of your very active and engaged members of your committee. We just want to make sure the record is clear on that.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you for that correction.
So Commissioner Fletcher, how do other individuals from other SMDs get involved?
Oh, so we've, we've sent that information. I reached out to, for the record, we've talked about this in previous ANC meetings, where I've asked folks, Commissioners, if you know somebody in your single-member district that wants to take part in this committee, please reach out to me. I know Commissioner Lucio and I, we've done a joint Public Safety Walk. I've also done some with Carmen Williams, President of North Mission Park Civic Association, outside of the ANC. So it's always open to anyone that wants to be part of the, the task force, from any ANC, any SMD within ANC 5A. Let me be very clear about that as well.
And, and, and I want to add to that, Commissioners, remember this is the Public Safety Committee that he started, is the committee that we are now looking at funding to have some activities. And so those boundaries that we set back then for the Public Safety Committee and for the involvement of all of the ANC's, those, those ground, those, 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 uh, those things still stand. And there's nothing to change here, except we are now getting money, and the committee will have some funds. And so if your SMD want to do the same thing, sort of with this committee, and any other SMD want to do the same thing, then you would be able to purchase whatever equipment that this committee is purchasing, your SMD would be able to have access to those same resources.
Absolutely. We are actively trying to make our communities safer through the ANC. That's what this is all about, for everybody. So anyone that wants to get involved, you're more than welcome to get involved, um, so.
So Commissioner Fletcher and Commissioner Edwards, so I'm going to make sure I'm understanding, because I do have some folks that I can have that want to join the Safety Committee, but I thought that this is from the commission, not just each single-member district. So is this each single-member district putting their own safety committee together? Or is this is 5A Commission Safety Committee?
The latter, 5A Public Safety Task Force for the entire.
But I think in order for you to be effective in your SMD, you're going to have to have some kind of organizing network in terms of being able to work with the, the bigger picture.
I understand that part, yeah. So, so in other words, I have two people that I can say that I want to be a part of the 5A Safety Task Committee, so they can reach out to you, Commissioner Fletcher, and they would be more or less like my representatives and, and my, from my area, to be able to work on it, okay? That's what I want to find.
Exactly, exactly.
Alright, good, okay.
And, and who knows, you know, maybe other ANC's, you know, will take heed to what we're doing here and replicate it. But we're doing this in ANC 5A because it's something we have agreed to, um, to do, so, yes ma'am.
And, and so, and so in furtherance of that discussion, I just want to say that, uh, to me, this is sort of like, okay, we've been trying to figure out, could we use funds? Now we know we can use funds, we kind of know the boundaries of how we can use those funds. We wanted to sort of alert the community of our findings, and then Commissioner Fletcher will take the lead in terms of taking us to the next steps in terms of, of how we proceed. But each commission that has concerns in your area with regard to safety, with regard to things that you think that the ANC can do to improve, then I think you, you, you all, we need to have those discussions so that we can try to figure out how to make those things happen.
But, and, and let me be very clear about this too, Chairman, and colleagues and constituents, this is on you as well to reach out to me, right? So if you don't reach out to me, I'm going to move forward with the folks that have reached out to me. So this is not Commissioner Fletcher's doing, so I want to be very clear about that.
Chairman, Commissioner Fletcher, I have a question, and it's related to the question that Euchana asked in the chat. I know we've had multiple discussions about this, but, and, and I don't, I was looking on the website, and I don't think we have a clear document that shows the, that lays out the purpose of the committee, the members of the committee, the, um, goals of the committee, and we don't have a clear document that says that.
Well, there, there is a doc, there's a, we passed a resolution, I can send it to you, Commissioner Lucio, needs be, that approves the Public Safety Task Force.
Right, I understand that. No, no, I know we, we approved the Public Safety Task Force. I'm just trying to see if we laid out all of the specifics about it at that time.
What the mission is and the purpose.
Right, I don't believe we did.
I think, I think our discussions with regard to the establishment of the, of the committee sort of had all those things sort of intertwined in it, the discussions, the purpose, why we're going to do it, and what he had planned on doing. Now we're getting into specifics, and he, uh, uh, is, you know, has, has presented sort of like a draft budget, but again, he says that that is a draft budget. So any clarifications, any additional points, I think safeguards that the commission want to put in place to make sure that we don't run afoul of the law. Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna start something here tonight? Oh, it is of a, um, something that's advantageous to the community, and we just need to make sure that, uh, the community works together to ensure that the funds are utilized in a proper manner. So if you all want to get together and just write up some more stricter sort of guidelines, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, I'm sure Commissioner Fletcher don't either.
Yeah, so Chairman Edwards, I, I just want to just make sure everyone's aware that in the, uh, resolutions folder on the website, we did, uh, in 2020, do a resolution, like you mentioned, this is the Crime Safety Task Force, um, but, you know, it just says that, you know, that it's going to be established and, and, uh, but I think, so I think we need some, I, I personally would like to see a, a more specific document that lays out, you know, the purpose, what, what the process is, and, and, you know, what the goals of the committee are, what they're going to, you know, sort of a mission, vision, value statement for the committee, so we know exactly what they're doing. And then we can also list, um, you know, the current members of the committee, and I think it would be helpful to make sure that we, and if we need help from all of the Commissioners, we can do that, but I think we need to at least make sure there is, at least one person represented from each of the single-member districts, if not more, so we make sure that, you know, everyone is involved. So I think we need to establish that type of, you know, document and committee and, and procedure.
Yeah, and, and just to touch on that too, I think it would be, um, helpful when we're asking community members if they want to join the task force and committee, um, you know, to know how often, when, when meetings are, what, you know, the requirements like, like to join, um, the involvement, um, and like, kind of the general purpose, but I, I really think this is a, a great idea. Um, Commissioner Fletcher, this is really awesome, I'm glad we're running with it tonight.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I would second Commissioner Rojas's, uh, comment about this, that, you know, if we have that type of document, it makes it easier to share with, with the potential people who might be interested in participating, so they know specifically what they're getting involved in.
Right, I agree, I agree.
It's not a problem, I will, I will develop this, and what, what I'm, a draft, and what I'm, what I'm hearing is, it'll probably advantageous for us to have a separate, Public Safety Task Force, uh, Development Meeting. And so what I will do is, I'll work, I'll talk with the, my colleagues, and figure out some, a date, and we'll send it out, at least with a good two weeks' notice. Maybe we'll even try and do it before the September 28th meeting, um, if possible, uh, for us to have this meeting where we can kind of flesh everything out. But, a-again, but I do want to be clear though, I want to be direct and say, like, hey, we've been talking about this for a while. COVID-19 did hit, and I know that kind of created, um, some hesitations and some issues and whatnot, but this is not a new topic. So I want to be very clear about that, folks could, folks had time to opine and comment, and did not, and now we're back at it again. So I'm going to, I'm going to give an opportunity for everyone to comment now, because we're kind of post-COVID, but let's make sure that we all have our comments in, so we can move forward with this project together.
Commissioner Fletcher, I'm going to respectfully disagree.
Sure.
Um, you know, I think we obviously did talk about this in years past, and I do remember that, and I do remember participating in some of the events, but we, we, and we, and we did pass a resolution supporting this effort, but there was never a, a time when a document or anything like that, or any sort of information was created that said very specifically what the purpose of this was, we know we talked about it, right? But it wasn't, it wasn't clearly defined, and there wasn't sort of a, a, a purpose, and it, um, an agenda set up, there wasn't objectives of the committee set up, and there wasn't, I would say, what I would call sort of a, I, I know there were sort of announcements that said, anyone who's welcome to join, wants to join, but I don't think we had sort of a concerted effort to say, here's how we're going to form this committee, and we're going to make sure, like we're saying now, that I, my recommendation is, is that we at least have one person from each single-member district. So I, I don't disagree, we had discussions about it, but we don't, I don't ever feel as though we solidified anything in terms of what exactly was going to happen.
Commissioner Lucio, what I, what I was referring, and all your comments and duly heard, I hear you, and they make sense. What I'm saying is, is that once we brought this to everyone's attention, and made it a public, uh, made a public announcement about this and passed, uh, this resolution, I received no emails, I received no feedback, that's Commissioner Lucio, that's all I'm referring to. I did not. So what I'm saying is now, I'm just asking the community to make sure that, that we do that, this, this go-around. That's all I'm saying, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just being very firm about what I'm saying right here, right now. That's it.
And so, and, and so I would like to just sort of add, and, because, you know, I feel like, you know, sometimes in these conversations, we kind of do go in circles. Um, I, Commissioner Fletcher, I, I'm going to ask you, as you've indicated, to schedule a meeting so that we can come together, and so that Commissioners can, uh, share their concerns. And, uh, maybe we can do it the second Wednesday in September, uh, I don't, I don't care, but so that, you know, when we come together now, the only thing that we've done here is identified a way to sort of give this organization some legs, so that it can produce some supplies, so that the community can use them, that's the only thing we've done. Other than that, from the very beginning, this committee has always been open. Now, if you, again, I just want to say, it sounds like you all want to have some very specific goals and everything sort of laid out, and so Commissioner Fletcher, please schedule that meeting so that we can have that, so that they can, you know, and, and don't expect him to write up all these things that you understand. If you have ideas, please write them up for us, so that we can get it moving. But let's don't use, you know, sort of, at these meetings, that opportunity now to sort of slow down, uh, a, a progress that we are making. But I just, I just want to say, it's, it's been a long road, we've all been agreeing that this is something that we wanted to do, and the only thing we've done today is talk about how we can sort of help to fund it. And so that should be all about, okay, we got funds, let's not figure out how to make it work, and that sounds like what you guys want to do, so let's do that. Commissioner Fletcher, schedule that meeting, let's have them come together, so that we can talk about it, so that by September 28th, we'll be on the same page, I think, in terms of what it is that the community wants to do.
Yep, 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 um, I see my colleague, Commissioner McDuffie has his hand, I have a comment, but I'll wait till, uh, get somebody else a floor.
Okay, Commissioner McDuffie, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I won't be long, first of all, good evening, everyone. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner Fletcher, for, for leading this, I know when, when I became a Commissioner, I know you were, um, leading this and always, uh, talking about this discussion. I think, uh, just the concern, just to try to balance things. I, I think folks kind of looked at it, because you've always spoken about this, but I think folks looked at it in a more informal manner before meeting, and they could join. You know, it was more so, you know, if, uh, for information, things like that, for community information, but I think now, with the fact that you may, um, or, you know, someone may be trying to spend money within the 5A budget, I think that raises the level of awareness and concern. And I think that's where this new energy is coming from.
Right.
Uh, so my suggestion would just to be, you know, put your contact information in the chat, and allow folks to reach out, who want to reach out, uh, to, to, um, connect with you, but I think you've been doing a great job so far, um, of leading this.
Thank you, Commissioner McDuffie.
And, and again, uh, the, as we said in the beginning, this is an introduction of this, this is to let everybody know what we're doing and how we're moving forward, and to give you an opportunity, community and all, to sort of reach out to Commissioner Fletcher over the next thirty days or so, so that by the time September 28th come around, he's, uh, better prepared, I think, in terms of, of speaking, uh, the voice of the community.
And, and, um, I see, uh, Mr. Bill Smith has his hand as well. And so if the ANC, if my colleagues are okay with it, I am okay with Wednesday, September 14th, um, to have a Public Safety Task Force Committee meeting, that's more than two weeks from now, or two weeks from now, so we can provide proper note, sufficient notice, and it gives me two weeks afterwards to kind of put together the takeaways from September 14th.
I think that's a great idea, I think that's perfect.
Okay, okay, alright, uh, Bill Smith, you have the floor?
This is just a comment, I think this is a great thing you're trying to do. I know the community wants to know personally, I'm out here on the street all the time, and I see problems building up quick, 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 over here. But, uh, a critique of what you want to do with this meeting coming up, and a critique of the ANC and other organizations in general, if you want community input, you got to let the community know, know about it. So I don't know what the solution is, but the community does not, people out here, I'm out here doing my yard work right now, people are telling them I'm on a Zoom meeting with ANC, they say, what, I didn't know about that, you know? Each one of you represents, it's two thousand people, each one of you represents about two thousand people, and right there, there are only twenty-two people in, in the, uh, in the Zoom.
Um, the, uh, the thing that we always say, uh, to that, Bill, and you're absolutely correct, I think in terms of, you know, getting the word out to the community. Uh, we've asked, uh, each ANC, uh, in addition to the posting of this stuff on the website, uh, sending out the email notices, the blast, the listservs that the Secretary has for the notices, uh, in some areas, you know, signs are posted, you know, and ANC Commissioners, please, if you're not doing that, we want to make sure that we are posting these signs, like invisible places within our neighborhood, at liquor stores and things like that, so that the neighborhood know. But at the end of the day, Bill, uh, you know, regardless of what the outreach is, at the end of the day, those that are interested are going to show up, and then those that, and, and then it's not possible for us to make sure that everybody know every time. But Commissioners, to his point, uh, we do want to make sure that we're doing everything to make sure that we're getting the word out, oh.
I don't want to beat, Ronnie, 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 one more thing, I don't want to beat the dead horse. There are people who don't do Zoom, guess, there's some active members of the community, I've gone to some of them's houses for some meetings, and what my traffic, and let them listen to the thing, because it doesn't have to, they don't know about Zoom, and meanwhile, everybody stopped in Zoom anyway, so why are we doing Zoom today?
I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is off topic.
Yeah, we're going off topic, and I still have more to discuss, Mr. Chair.
Alright, but I do want to, um, just sort of say to him, uh, everybody is not going off Zoom, some people are still on Zoom, we are sort of looking at it, and we'll be getting off of, of it, uh, soon, but we do realize that Zoom has really helped to increase our participation and attendance more so than the, uh, public meetings, but we'll probably be coming up with a process where we do both, or something like that, but we'll get back to the agenda, I see Mr. Oliver had his hand up, is Mr. Oliver, if, if your comments are related to this, you have the floor. Robert? Okay, looks like he's not there. Uh, Commissioner Fletcher, I think we have, uh, beat this horse enough tonight. Uh, anything that you want to say, anything else that you'd like to add to this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, because I want to, uh, respect the, the question that was asked by Euchana Evans as well. So I want to share, this is just a preliminary budget. Again, this is just a, a rough draft, I want to be very clear about this, please, no, no one hold me to the fire, like, this is it. But, let me smooth this over, so I could see, so there's four items. A safety vest, reflective safety vests that residents can wear at nighttime as they're walking the community, you know, whether they're running, biking, walking, walking their dog, walking their young child, or just whatever. I just did, I did a very basic quantity of fifty. Um, a flashlight as well, to help illumination at nighttime, safety, you know? If there's light, you have, there's increased safety. A whistle as well, if you see something, you want to alert that there's some danger, there's something awry, something afoot, these are items that I worked with and talked with, I'll be very direct, Robert Oliver, with. Um, batteries, AAA batteries for the flashlights, right? Because we, the flashlights need batteries. And so, as you can see, the total for just this is twenty-two-hundred-ninety-seven dollars, two-thousand-two-hundred-ninety-seven dollars. So very basic, very simple, just to get us going. Um, I don't want, I want to make sure that when we're talking about spending government funds, that we're being very fiscally conservative and responsible with every dollar, so I don't want to purchase any items that will not be used. So if anyone else has additional items, please, um, let's not talk about them now and take up more time, but you can email me, or, and, or bring it to our meeting on September 14th. Uh, but if there's any comments to what's here, I'll, I'll take that at this time.
Commissioner Fletcher, my only comment would be, is, is that we make sure that these items are in line with the priorities of the committee. And then my other question would be, are, are these just going to the committee members, or are these being dispersed to the general population?
Good question.
And if, and if they're being dispersed to the population, how are we determining who gets them? And, and is there an anticipation that, you know, that caught on, people would need more?
Yeah, those all good questions, and why, I look forward to the meeting on the 14th to really dive into it. Um, but just high level, uh, what I would say is, we would, we would, we would use, um, the ANC office to store the public safety equipment, and then we would loan it out on a case-by-case basis. How we determine that, we need to, we need to discuss that, not here, not now, but there will be some kind of determination formula as to how we give out these items. And that leads me to my last comment around this, um, because I spoke to our Chair about this, we have to reuse or change up our use of the eight, the satellite ANC office. The satellite ANC office will no longer, uh, works in the foreseeable future, not just be, uh, the sole use of the War Five Mutual Aid, uh, because we're, we're moving out of the pandemic, there are other, and there are other benefits, other uses for that space. And so I, I, the Chair asked me to be very clear with everyone that we would be utilizing the ANC office as well, so, so the equipment will be stored in the satellite ANC office. Those are my answers at this time, and I'll make sure I have more for the September 14th meeting.
Uh, this is Robert Oliver, I'd like to jump on for a second, if I may. Uh, one of the things about the Public Safety Committee is that we are pivoting in that we are not, say, looking at solely fighting crime, but better, uh, rather, enhancing the neighborhood. And by that, I mean, you know, we would have individuals, you know, walk the community, their own respective communities, and look for things like tripping hazards, uh, tree box issues, broken branches, uh, maybe properties that, uh, can be better kept. Uh, one of the things I've learned in working in this community is that a lot of the elderly people, like Bill has pointed out, don't know where to go to get things answered. For example, when the sidewalks are redone, there were some sidewalks that the, um, I should say, tree boxes, that the, uh, there wasn't enough filled dirt inside of them, that there were pock holes that you didn't see, because if you walked in the grass, grass looked smooth, but when you walked on the grass, it was a tripping hazard. And the sad thing was, people complained about this. The city had a maintenance clause that these things could be repaired in a year if someone had mentioned something. No one mentioned anything, a year or two had passed, by the time word got to the ANC, and there was nothing really anyone could do, other than take it upon themselves to do it. Those are the type of things that we're trying to alleviate. And also in the future, uh, there is going to be a big issue with, uh, DC water, in which they're going to come in, and I believe they're going to replace lead pipes, both on their side and the consumer's side, or homeowner's side. That's something that we need to get the word out when that program starts, and there's nothing better than a Public Safety Committee who's walking around at grassroots, making sure that everyone knows this. So yes, I do, uh, recommend that we have policies and procedures to let us know what the limits of, uh, what we can and cannot do, and I'm going to work with Gordon Fletcher with that. And one thing I need to bring up, though, is that due to the changes in ANC boundaries, uh, come, oh, November, I guess, is when things start, I will be in ANC 5A09, as opposed to 5A08.
Not until January, though, don't move too fast.
Okay, well, cool, but it's going to happen, so that's all I wanted to bring up, and you guys, you know, we will deal with that later.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Commissioner Washington, Europe?
Uh, my, uh, question, or my concern is about the budget in dollar amount and quantities in, and looking at the information that you sent out, Commissioner Fletcher, of where you got your prices from, and I'm thinking along the lines that these numbers may increase, because I think that we need to be, um, using, utilizing, um, minority vendors and black-owned vendors to purchase these items, as opposed to large corporations. So I just want to put that out there, that the dollar amount may have to increase as it relates to that. And I'm sure there's some places locally that we can purchase these items from.
And, and I, I just want to add to that, oh, oh, I think it's a great idea, but I don't want to limit it, uh, I wouldn't want to limit it to, say, just minority or black-owned, but I think DC, if we just say DC, then we stay. Yeah, we, we stay out of any, uh, kind of.
And, and we could do that, and to your point, Commissioner Washington, yeah, the prices may increase, but, um, yeah, for sure, but, you know, I know there's one vendor that comes to my, I think it's Metropolitan or Metropolis, I believe, uh, that, it's a black-owned, woman-owned, DC-based vendor that has all, all the equipment that we need, so.
Muskattalos has it, so, I mean, it's a couple of places. As slow as we, yeah, instead of going to big-box corporations, I think, we need to stick there, yeah.
And again, full disclosure, this was just for some numbers, just to move the conversation. I want, I want to move, I want to be slow and methodical, but I want to move. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Alright, um, sounds like, um, that's, this is a good place now, Commissioner Fletcher just sort of bringing into, uh, that part of the discussion, it's been a very good discussion. Commissioners, please, please, uh, work with Commissioner Fletcher, reach out to him, any ideas, any questions, any concerns, let's get those flushed out between now and the 28th, so that on 28th, uh, he can present. I mean, I'm saying that the 28th of September, get that flushed out before the 28th of September, so that when he comes next month, making that report, we're all on the same page, and then we can sort of put this thing to action. Alright, the next item on the agenda, uh, Mr. Bagley is here. Commissioners, if you recall, I just want to give you a little background, and then I would. Commissioners, if you recall, I just want to give you a little background, and then I will turn the floor over to uh Mr. Bagley. If you recall, back in March of of uh of of this, of this year, ANC five A voted uh to approve a uh ABRA Class B license for the um, uh, uh Trinity uh social market uh place that was under Trinity Grill and Social Marketplace there at two hundred Michigan Avenue. Uh, that was in March. Then in uh July, I received a letter both from uh ABRA and from the applicant, a notice uh indicating that the applicant had now applied to increase uh, and to expand the services now from a Class B to a Class C, to a Class C establishment. And the hearing for that is September the sixth. And so i- in order for us to uh get uh, i- if anybody has any concerns or anything like that with regard to this, uh, we just needed to, uh, and not the hearing, the uh petition deadline, the protest deadline, comment deadline to ANC pass on September sixth. And so uh, we've got them back today. It was a great establishment to, at the last meeting. We liked what we saw, everybody was excited, and we voted to approve their application. At that time, uh, we approved the application, uh, sent it to ABRA, and uh now before us is the Class C application. And I would turn the floor over to Mr. Bagley. Mr. Bagley, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, good evening. Um, so I'm not exactly sure where to begin or where you would like me to begin.
Well, it's Class C. Yes, so just tell us what the difference is, is going to be now in your operation as opposed to the original application. There is a summer garden, that's a part of this. We want to know how that's going to work. All those kind of things. And the one thing I do want to add, uh, commit, Mr. Oliver made a statement uh earlier about ANC's, and this SMD, as you guys know, is on the uh northern uh uh, uh, southern most end of uh five A. And it will be uh in the stronghold uh district uh area with the stronghold community next time. And so I've invited uh the commission, the uh individual who is running, a- and he's the only candidate running for reelection uh for this position, who will be the commissioner uh most likely uh in January, uh, uh, Kirby Van. Kirby Vanning is on here. I saw his name earlier. Kirby, okay, there's Kirby up there. Uh, hello, Kirby. All right, so uh, Mr. Bagley, you can go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay, so with the Class C, actually, it was a part of the original uh business operations uh, since adding seating. Um, and like uh, we previously said that we're not going to be your typical bar or lounge restaurant or anything. It was more so because we're adding dining, so we want to offer the option. If you do decide to dine in, you can have a glass of wine, you can have a uh beer or um, uh, handcrafted cocktail or a uh um, mimosi, if you will, while you're dining in. And then it's also uh for the Trinity students that are of age and for the neighbors that uh will come in to tell a word um and for meetings and as such. So, yeah, uh.
The summer garden, yeah, can you, tell us a little bit about that? What, what does that mean?
Uh, so the summer garden, um, by ABRA standards, it's just out, exterior seating, outdoor seating. So they classified that uh endorsement as summer garden. Um, so the neighbors uh alongside of us, they already have outdoor seating. So for us to uh have outdoor seating, uh, we needed that endorsement.
And and where would the outdoor seating be? Um, um, help me understand, uh.
Uh, so right along the, right along the walkway, along the window of our unit. So it's about, it would approximately be uh four to five tables, uh, two seaters just along the walkway, along the way of our unit.
Okay, now, so I haven't, and 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 maybe I'm missing something. I haven't seen any of the other vendors have tables out on the sidewalk now. And so I just, have, have your drawings? Do you have drawings and stuff in terms of 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 how the layout is?
Uh, yes, uh.
Yeah, the last meeting, he had some very good drawings, I think, and it would be nice if you could show us some, some drawings.
Give me one second, let me see if I can pull those up. I do have those drawings, uh.
So.
Go ahead.
Who was that? Once you, once you have those drawings, could you please also email those to me so that I can put those on the website? We typically um include the presentations on the websites for each meeting.
Okay, do you have your email? Because I'm not sure I will be able to share it uh with the team from.
I just gave you, I just gave you co-host permission, so you can share your screen. Um, but my email is five A zero three at ANC dot D C dot gov.
Five A zero three, uh, actually, I can send it to uh Commissioner Ellis. I have his popped up.
That's fine, he can forward them to me, but you do have, uh, you, I just made you a co-host, so you can share your screen.
Okay, uh, let's see.
Commissioner Edwards, I think we're talking about along Michigan Avenue?
Oh, that's what I would think, but it sounds like.
No, the, the seating, the outdoor seating would not be along Michigan Avenue. It would be on the parking lot side of the uh, like the strip mall, on the inner uh sidewalk area of the strip mall, not out on the actual public sidewalk.
No, 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 I know that. I'm just saying that the way it's facing, it's facing Michigan Avenue.
Oh, yeah, the side of the, the side of.
Yeah, beside the building, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So now let me ask you, in terms of the sidewalk, do you meet D dot standards in terms of use of the public sidewalk?
Yeah.
All right, yes, so.
I, I do have another question about the sidewalk seating while we're on that.
Okay, those are the kinds of questions that I think we would kind of like, if you could answer for us in terms of your presentation, sort of show us where it's going to be. I know that D dot has, D dot has limitations in terms of, you know, seating outside. And as long as you can explain to us that, do you, you know, show us the diagram and say that it meets those, then those are the kinds of things that we uh interested in kind of hearing.
It can't, I mean, what, I'm, in regard to the seating, let me, while you're doing, getting those plans, let me ask one question. Um, will there be enough space on the sidewalk with the seating for uh ADA access?
Yeah, that's what this, his drawing will help us answer that.
I just want to make sure.
That's why we get, want to see the drawing.
Thanks.
Uh, so yes, and actually, I believe uh the sidewalk, uh, where, where, where the seating would be is uh, I believe it falls under private property. So it wouldn't be uh, you know, on the public sidewalk.
I'm not so sure that private property is exempt from, I, I think that there are maybe some, but from ADA standards, I think. Commissioner Fletcher?
Yeah, it's not exempt.
Right, no, no, so it's definitely ADA, but just as far as, because the side of the building sits on Michigan Avenue, but the actual seating would be and the, along the parking lot on the inner.
Right, I understand that, and I, and I know exactly the way, I know exactly the way it's laid out. I've been there. And and there is a sidewalk in front of the, in front of the, in front of the businesses there. So all I'm asking is, is that the way you've got the seating, will there be enough space for, for, you know, ADA compliance?
Yes, yes.
Okay, if you can show us that in the drawing, that would be helpful.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, uh, Kirby, I see your hand is up, uh, you got something you want, oh, yeah, you, 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 you got it. Got it up, if you could take it down, then.
Waving around while I'm looking at stuff on the webpage.
So, um, uh, Mr. uh Bagley, um, I know, uh, you said that Mr. Jackson was going to be coming. Has he arrived? Because I'm sure he probably could do things a little bit better in terms of you working with that. And if you want, what we could do is move to this next item that we've got to talk about, and then we'll come back to you, and that may give him and you a little bit more time to sort of get, to get together.
Okay, I can follow up with, I'm not sure, you know, what his timing is.
All right.
Um, but I guess I, I should be able to, uh, you know, answer everything and provide everything. I just sent you the drawings. So they should be coming through.
Okay, Commissioner Lucio, if you have, you sent them to me or, you, hold on for a minute, okay, if you send them to me, then I will, uh, we can share them on this end. Let's see.
Okay.
Commissioner Lucy. Let me see if I have them. All right, okay, Commissioner Lucy, I'm just going to forward them to you. And then that way, uh, you can uh go ahead and, and do it. Okay, I just sent them to you.
Yeah, so the beer garden, from my understanding, is just the endorsement that we needed for the outdoor seating.
Yeah, and for us, though, from a community standpoint, we, and and then there should be, and I, I think I'm, I'm, I may be missing something now. At some point, you're going to have to go to uh D dot and get a public space permit.
We can't even do anything until he does that.
Yeah, so I, I think, um, you know, and, yeah. We, you know, unless we have that, we wouldn't be able to approve the beer guard, the uh, the uh summer garden concept, but we could approve so much as the use, you know, in the restaurant. But that, you know, inside, but the outside stuff, we've got to hear from D dot on. You understand that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Want to write that down, so it's, it's a public space permit.
Yes. All right, now, uh, so the drawings are here. And can you make them a little larger, Commissioner, uh? So, just explain, you can explain whatever you want to explain, and then sort of show us the area outside that you are talking about in terms of.
Okay, uh, did you uh forward the three D version with the color? So you can see it on this, this, the two D. So you see the four tables outside, or the five tables on the, yes.
Is that the one you want to see?
Uh, so the three D version, three D version is in color and, and uh.
Okay, I can pull that up in a second. Um, but what, what, what this doesn't show me is where the edge of the sidewalk is.
Right.
Okay. So, and on that column, so the sidewalk, we'll say is, uh, you know, um, your typical sidewalk is one square.
Yeah, but, but we need exact measurements, and we need to make sure that the, that the walking path between the last edge of the table and the curb of the sidewalk is meets the thirty-six inches required.
Okay, uh, I'm at the unit now, I can go out and measure it to be. Uh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I can, I can have the drawing, you know, I.
Let me just say this, because and and I do think, as far as I know about this process, I think I'm right, and and Commissioners, you can help me. I think if we, you're talking about a, a summer garden that you're going to be operating outside on the sidewalk, you're going to have to get a permit from D dot, and when you go to D dot for that permit, D dot will come to ANC five A and then ask us to provide comment with that regard. So I think we can uh consider your application tonight. You are upgrading from a Class B to a Class C now, where you want to have restaurant and dining, uh, and you've talked about a summer garden. We can, we can discuss anything related to the internal operations of this facility. We'll make sure that any actions we take tonight would only be related to the inside operations of the facility and not related to the summer garden. And, but you will be able to get your Class C license so that if you want to put a summer garden, not that you, you can, but we're not voting on a summer gardening uh, or even talking about the summer garden portion of this application tonight. Is, is that, Commissioners, are we okay with, with, with that, uh?
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, but, but did that come with some hour changes within, for the inside, or was the hours associated with the summer garden?
Uh, the hours would be the same. Um, and, you know, I, I guess, uh, ideally, the summer garden. So, it was just perfect. I don't really see it as a summer garden. It's just outdoor seating. I know the endorsement
Okay.
classifies it as a summer garden. So for me, the outdoor seating, you know, that's seasonal.
Okay.
So it, it, it wasn't, it wouldn't be like something where we play heaters and everything out there, and, you know, it's music or it's uh, congregation of people. No, it's just a couple of forced uh, four tables to, uh, you know, two-seater tabletops. Sort of thing, so it wouldn't be like a outdoor, you know, like summer beer garden, uh, like how some other venues throughout the city have, no. Uh, it would be comparable to what our uh tenants to the next, about, to next door to us have.
Okay.
Um, and, but the hours would still be the same uh, from six AM to eleven PM, Monday through Thursday, and uh Friday closing, Friday and Saturday closing at twelve AM. And um, Sun, Sundays is seven to ten PM.
All right, and those hours are consistent with the hours we previously approved. They're the same. Um. Okay, so questions, any further questions, anything else you got, uh, Mr. Badly, anything else you'd like to tell us about this uh, application?
Uh, no, sir, that's it.
All right, uh, Commissioners, let's see. The notice that I received from the uh ABRA, um, was basically read. It says that um, this will be a new Class C tavern with a seating capacity of fifty and a total occupancy load of fifty. The summer garden with twelve seats, requesting an entertainment endorsement to provide live entertainment indoors only. All right, so what uh I am saying to you tonight is, based on these discussions, I've reached out to all of the surrounding neighborhoods, had meetings and discussions with Park Place, reached out to uh Trinity, Trinity Community College, uh, and no one has voiced any objections uh to uh, this application uh up to now. Uh, based on that, I would uh entertain a motion, Commissioners, that we uh, uh, support uh the uh, uh, Class C of, of tavern of, of application, that's an increase from a B to C, which was B and Y, and now it's going up to C uh, with a seating capacity of fifty. Uh, uh, we, our letter would say that we support uh the application for the our motion would say that we support the application for the Class C with no comment uh regarding the summer gardening at this time. Oh, and then uh, that would be something like what our, our motion, if you agree, would, would, would say. Uh, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Is there a motion to support the application for uh Class C?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a motion forth to support um the upgrade to Class C. I would.
All right, is there a second? Okay, uh, Commissioner Rojas and Commissioner Washington, okay. All right, um, Commissioners, you've heard the motion. It's been properly moved and seconded. We support the application for the uh Class C uh license uh, with uh, uh, indication that uh we uh have no no, with no uh, uh, action taken with regard to the summer garden. We'll get that letter uh prepared if this motion uh passes. Uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, there's one abstention, but the record reflect, um, okay, so the vote was, we have what? Six commissioners, seven, six here?
Did we hear from Commissioner Lockett?
Uh, I don't think he's here tonight. Okay, so he's here. All right, so yes. Commissioner Lockett voted.
I I don't see a microphone on him. So I don't know what the story is with Commissioner Lockett.
Okay, um.
We didn't oppose to three.
Yeah, he's he's present and as long as he he didn't vote either way. Well, he's he's voted, he's voted to support it. Unless he tells us otherwise, he doesn't have to unmute to tell us otherwise. He just goes down recorded as, uh, voting in favor of. As as long as he's present, so then.
Well, we we, I mean, his screen is off, so we, I I mean, we're gonna assume he's present, but.
I got you. So the, so what's the vote? How many commissioners do we have present?
Including him, it's six to zero to one.
Six, zero, one. Okay, all right. That'll be the vote, uh, taken for this. All right, the next item on the, uh, okay, sir, uh, we finished, uh, we will get the letter prepared. Um, as soon as you can find out what you need to do with regard to the summer garden, you can just let us know and we'll be happy to sort of work with you on that.
Okay, well done.
All right.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay. All right, the last and final item on the agenda, uh, Commissioner Washington, you have the floor.
Yes, I do. Uh, thank you, Kelly, and, um, I see Ms. Pickett. I think she's on too. Anyway, um, the reason why this is on the agenda is because I received a email request from Bridges, um, Public Charter School requesting school parking permits for my single member district for their staff to be able to park in the residential neighborhoods that are deemed RPP. Um, I spoke with Olivia, who is the, uh, principal at the school and, um, we, I was a little upset because she hadn't reached out to me as a commissioner to discuss the situation. And so I had a conversation with, uh, Jason Miggs, who is, um, a part of D dot about it. And he was kind of explaining to me what the program was, but I was still wasn't familiar with it. So I reached out and Ms. Haley Peckett gave me a call and she and I talked about it at length. And I asked her to appear or someone to come tonight to talk to us about it because it's a new program that DC and the council, uh, DC Public Schools or DC Public Charter Schools have approved and the council has approved, um, to issue, uh, school, uh, parking permits uh, so that their employees can park and not get tickets during the day. So if, uh, right now, because, uh, Haley and I did talk about it, I want her to be able to explain more about this program because it's gonna affect all of us that have schools or charter schools in our communities. And most of us have residential parking and my concern is that there are some areas that the program may not work because of the limit amount of residential parking and the effect that it will have on the community. So Ms. Peckert or either Kelly, because I think both of you guys are here, I appreciate one of you taking the lead and explaining the program and the process to the commissioners and the community.
All right, hi, um, hi, I'm Haley Peckett. Can everyone hear me? So I'm Haley Peck, uh, I'm Haley Peck and I'm the Associate Director for Curbside Management Division at D dot. Um, and I, uh, my group oversees all sorts of parking and curbside regulations, including the school parking zone. Um, the school parking zone program, like Commissioner Washington said, it is brand new. Uh, this is the first time that we are offering it and we're offering it in response to legislation from twenty eighteen that came about when some DCPS schools were undergoing renovation. Um, and they had to choose between staff parking, so parking lot size or, uh, additional classroom space or space for play areas. So I think spurred on by that, council created this legislation that would provide an opportunity um, for school staff to park in RPP areas or park nearby schools um, without being incredibly specific about how it would happen, but kind of using the idea that a lot of people in RPP zones do commute out of their neighborhoods during the day. Twenty eighteen, I understand, is very different than twenty twenty-two, um, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on on the idea behind it. Uh, the school parking zone program, so the way it actually will work is that, uh, any DCPS or public charter school may apply. And, um, to apply, they can either apply jointly with an ANC. The ANC can pass a resolution saying, we would like, um, to request a school parking zone for Bridges Charter School or Moore Elementary or whatever the school is. Um, or the school may also apply without, um, without the ANC having a resolution, in which case the ANC is to be informed. And that's what's happening in the cases of Bridges. Um, the program, we have a specific formula to calculate, uh, the number of permits for school. And, uh, Commissioner Washington, this is something I didn't share with you at our conversation earlier this week, but the program is based on, uh, a staff survey and is calculated based on the number of staff that are already parking. They're already driving to school, they're already parking on street. So a lot of them are either using visitor passes or they are moving their car every two hours. Um, and then we actually reduce that number by ten percent. So say fifty staff members in a school are currently parking, are currently driving to school. They answered the survey and say they're currently driving to school. There is a thirty, uh, vehicle parking lot. That leaves twenty permits that are currently parking on the street. We would reduce that by ten percent and give the school eighteen permits. That's just the example of how we do the calculation. Um, school staff have to pay fifty dollars for their permit for the year. The permit is good from seven thirty to AM to five thirty PM on school days only. Um, and the permit can be used anywhere in ANC. And in the case of Bridges, as well as any other school that we see that's on the boundary of an ANC, D dot will extend that to be good over multiple ANC's. Um, and we are providing guidance to school staff on where they can and cannot park, where the RPP zones are. Um, and in some cases, so this is an example that happened during a, um, kind of a trial program last year. The school staff said, please don't park on this street. This is where a lot of our pickup and drop off activity occurs or this place gets really congested. And we asked them not to and they didn't. So, um, I would welcome that type of feedback. And that's the type of feedback we welcome from the ANC. Um, I think I covered the high points. I'm sure you have other questions. So let me stop there and see what other questions and responses you have.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, so, um, I'm gonna use, um, Commissioner Washington's, uh, single member district as an example because she has a school in her single member district that is on a very busy street, right? It's on, it's on Riggs Road, right? The entrance is on Riggs Road, right? There's traffic issues with Riggs Road. There's no parking on Riggs Road itself, right? So this would be another school within the five A boundary that actually borders Ward Four, right? So that's, this is one of the double boundary areas you're talking about, I'm assuming, right? But they have come up with a creative solution where they have, I believe, purchased a a vacant lot next to the school that they use for parking, right? Um, so I, my question is, is, is what efforts are made to coordinate with the school to determine before, before going through this, uh, RPP, uh, parking, school parking zone? Um, if there, if there are other alternatives to doing that for, to other alternatives that they can utilize first before that. And so obviously, you know, DC bilingual came up with a creative solution. I'm I'm gonna tell you that Mondo Verde Second Campus is in my single member district. Um, and we came up with a creative solution as well, even though it's not an RPP parking area. It, there's very limited street parking and it's a one-way street in and out. So we, they have leased a parking lot that's across the street for their extra parking. So I think there are other creative solutions that can happen. So I'm just, as as I said, I wanted us to know what, is is there sort of a process that's used to say, have you exhausted all other remedies before going to this?
Yeah, I totally appreciate that. Thank you very much for bringing up those examples. And I can actually note that, like, my children's school went through a BZA process where they had to provide all their parking on campus. So like, I think there are cases where the school has to provide all that parking or has come up with a solution to do so. And you, as ANC commissioners, are in the best position to make sure that's provided to D dot. But also to answer your question, if we know about those, those, um, lots, they would count as the school's existing parking. So again, let's use that fifty fifty school staff example. If they have a thirty, a thirty vehicle lot across the street plus a ten vehicle lot on campus, we're gonna count them as having forty spots, not as having ten spots because they're on campus. Um, if they, we asked the question in the survey to know, is there any other parking available that the school already uses? So we do ask that question. If they lie to us, which again, we are not assuming the worst. I work with lots of citizens that try to, um, be creative in the truth in terms of trying to find parking in the district. Um, but I think that a lot of the schools, I I assume will be acting with integrity because it is school staff. But if we did find that they were not sharing that with us, um, I do believe that the ANC notification process should allow that to happen. So people have asked me, what is the role of the ANC? What type of feedback are you looking for from the ANC?
I'm sorry, just can I, can I, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, because that actually didn't answer my question. So I guess my question is more specifically. You said in the application, there is a question as to whether they have parking and they they may or may not tell the truth. But that's, that's not really relevant to my question. My question is, is that, is there a question in in your survey or in your process that specifically asks them, have they looked into other alternatives, right? That that's my question. And and there was just a question posed in the chat that I think is also relevant to this point as well. And that is, is, ha, do you also ask how far they are to a, to a, to public transportation?
That's right.
To allow, and then so perhaps not providing them with as many permits if they are, if they are close enough to to public transportation as a way to encourage their families to use the public transportation and their staff to use the public transportation as opposed to taking up parking spaces?
Yes, so to the second question, yes, we do consider proximity to Metro Rail as well as high frequency bus and streetcar. Um, we also require all of the schools to create a sustainable transportation plan that commits them to shifting their mode share over the next several years. And finally, the number of permits is going to be reduced by ten percent every year. So the idea is that they use the Sustainable Transportation Plan and resources from our Transportation Demand Management Group so that the number's going down over time. Um, Commissioner Lucio, back to your original question, we have not specifically worked with each school to say, can we, can we make sure we've exhausted all other options first? I'm absolutely happy to take that into consideration and think about what might be a feasible way to incorporate that into the process. Um, I will say, I was part of conversations. We've had a working group, uh, for the last year and I've had many one-on-one conversations with a number of schools that have very limited parking and are undergoing renovations and trying to come up with a solution. Um, and I will say for the schools that I've talked to that are extremely strapped for parking, they have considered every possible option. They've talked to their ANC's. They have worked with local retailers. I can't say every school has. My experience is anecdotal. I haven't talked to all three hundred eligible schools in the district. Um, but the ones I've talked to, when we're like, well, did you consider this? They're, they're generally like, if if there was a solution, we would have explored it by now.
Well, I I like to add to that, if I can, Haley, um, because I think we talked about it. I have three charter schools plus Mary Center that are all right in line with each other. Where Bridges is was originally Mamie D Lee. And we were trying, when the time came for them to vote on Mamie D Lee to be given to and made a charter school, the ANC did, was not in support of where they were going with Brea Bridges and the Mary Center. So we voted against that. Um, DC bilingual was just put there. I wasn't able to even ask the question about that charter school. But DC bilingual just added on to that school and added additional parking spaces in the back of their school to accommodate their staff. They're renting two spaces, one that Commissioner Lucio was talking about and at the Church of Plymouth over on North Capitol Street. Um, Bridges has parking in the back that they created and they are all within walking distance. I mean, within fifty feet of Metro.
For a time, yep.
Okay. Fort Titan Drive is one, is one street, is one, One Direction Street going north and south. There's parking only on one side of the street. The streets that they're looking at was gallant. And the comments that I got, which were alarming to me was, and I guess even you shared with me, was the hope is that people go to work during the day, so therefore individuals can park in their parking spaces. And by the time they come home from work, then they would have someplace to park. Well, my community is basically made up of seniors. So if a senior leaves out in the morning for a doctor's appointment, a medical appointment, go to grocery store at seven thirty in the morning, they come back and if someone's parked there, where are they gonna park? So my question is, who comes out or does someone come out to look at the areas that are in question that they're trying to issue these parking permits in to determine if it's even feasible?
Yeah, I I I understand your question. I hear that.
I mean, it really has to be, it really has to be done. I mean, I, Commissioner Lucio said, I mean, I thought it was to encourage people, that's why. And that's what I heard from, hear from all of the school reps, that we're encouraging our employees to use Metro. But now I'm hearing, oh, some are gonna be given parking permits. I'm just, I mean, it's just, that's just very disturbing to me that even something like that got passed or didn't come to the ANC's for us to even talk about, to hear about and to hear about it the way that I did. So I mean, I I really have some issues and concerns with it. And I did explain it to, um, Olivia and she was just, you know, she was surprised because she didn't have the opportunity to come to me. It was given to me, as we discussed, without her coming to me to talk to me about it initially.
So, well, I I really, I I thank you very much. I mean, I really appreciate all of your feedback. This is the first time we're doing this program and it's really helpful to hear and I do appreciate everything you're saying. And I certainly understand the frustration. Um, I can share that we did, uh, via email and via an ANC. I don't know, Kelly, you might be able to share more, but we did reach out to all of the ANC commissioners on a list serve about a year ago when we started the working group. So we've had ANC commissioners participate on our working group. So there was some notification, but I understand that this is the first you're hearing of it and I do apologize for that, that we did not do a better job on that.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but it would be interesting to know how many commissioners participated citywide.
I can get that information for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, Miss Peckett, is that, you know, there, there is, you know, there are lots of ways to reach out to the ANC commissioners. And there is a group of commissioners that span the whole city that do meet regularly and I don't believe this ever came to that group either. So again, I would agree with Commissioner Washington that I would like to know how that information got out, who who's involved in this group and and, you know, why wasn't it, you know, more broad? But I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, it does sound like, obviously, since the city council passed, it, you know, we're, we need to, you know, figure out how to work with this. And obviously, we can't change that except we could go to the city council and ask them to adjust it, but that's a whole nother process. But I mean, you know, so I think at this point, what we, I would personally like to do is just figure out how we can improve the permitting process to to ensure that the ANC's are involved from the beginning, that the right questions are asked in terms of what other, um, steps have been taken. And as Commissioner Washington had mentioned, that there is a proper assessment of the current parking situation of the neighborhood. Um, and 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 quite frankly, and I'm not trying to say that, that, you know, this isn't done properly, but there are times when D dot says they come out and do assessments related to other things. And they say that, you know, um, certain things aren't, RPP or something like that isn't warranted because, you know, there's not enough cars there, but they're looking during the day when people are at work. So, uh, you know, it, pardon me if I say I don't have a lot of faith in the, in the possibility that this is gonna be done correctly. But my, uh, preference would be is, is that whatever that process is, that there be some conversations with the ANC. Whatever that process is, that there be some conversations with the A and C commissioner for that signif, for that single member district. So that who knows the residents, who knows what the parking is like on a regular basis? And uh, and to Commissioner Washington's point. Can mention the fact that, you know, look, in this particular area, there are a lot of elderly residents who don't leave for work in the morning. Who may leave for Dr. Swims and come back and need to guarantee that they have parking when they come home. So I think.
Absolutely. So thank you very much.
Is sort of shore up the process.
All right, um, I saw Commissioner Duffy had. And I think he, he took it down after so long, Commissioner.
Thank you all. And thank you uh for sharing this information. This is uh Pickett. If I'm uh Pickett, I'm pronouncing my name correctly, hopefully. I have a quick question. You shared some numbers when you opened up. I believe you, you said a number of fifty. Is that the current number of? Staffers or spaces that you shared with us?
Oh, I was using a hypothetical number on how we would do the calculation.
Okay, so do you already have the number of parking spaces at the, um, at the school at Bridges?
Bridges?
Yes.
Um, I don't have that in front of me. When I looked at the status of their application, they had not completed their survey. Or they were still missing some pieces of their survey. So we hadn't been able to do the calculation yet.
Okay, so that information is gonna be shared prior to a request from us, I would imagine.
Correct. I'll, I can get that information to you um after, afterwards. I'm sorry that I don't have that calculated yet.
Thank you. And I would only ask because um. We would love to know how many spaces are available, how many spaces, particularly if you're looking for, you know, residential parking passes. So we can see, you know, what's reasonable. There may already be enough spaces for compared to the amount of staff. That you have on board. Like, you know, we don't know that yet, but I would appreciate if you can share that information.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I would just, I would ask because all of your comments are very valid. And it's really the idea of um doing fieldwork and measuring occupancy. Is really one that we wrestled quite a bit at D dot. Council told us, you must be able to have a turnaround time of about sixty days. And we didn't know if three hundred schools were gonna come to us all at the same time from really different contexts in the city. And would we have the staff and resources to be able to do a realistic occupancy count? Which would probably not need to be one site visit, but multiple site visits because use varies by day of the week and by, by street and so forth. Um, and so we basically said, why don't we launch this using? The ways that we want, using these ideas on spreading the burden and listen to the A and Cs on where and how staff are using it. So. One thing I'm very interested from you is like. I will let you know when Bridges is the only school in your, in five A or adjacent to five A that has even expressed interest yet. Um, no other schools have reached out to us or have started submitting any piece of the application. They certainly could. Um, but I would, would really ask all of you that assuming Bridges does get permits, uh please. Let us know once those permits are issued and active. Where you think, please, you know, this is an area that should be restricted. This is an area that we would like to see more use. Why don't you consider expanding to this A and C? Um, and, and let us know how they're used. You know, if you say they're all are concentrated on Gallatin or we see them all on First Street or whatever. Please give us that feedback because I think once we know the specifics of the problem, I believe you, there could be an impact on residents. But until we know what that is, where we're seeing it and who is being impacted, it will be harder for us to make changes to the process.
I, I have a question. And, and. Why is it important for schools to have a privilege for their employees?
Commissioner Washington.
To be able to find parking for them to come to work. When we have thousands of government employees that go to work every day. And have to find parking on their own.
Yeah.
And use Metro. I mean, I just can't, I just can't stand that. What gives them the privilege, the right?
So, 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 so Ms. Pickett, I think what I'm hearing really is. A question about D dot's process. Now, I understand that this goes some kind of way back to law. And you say that the council approved some, some law, I think, that authorizes this thing to happen. But the question really is, you know, in terms of the implementation of this and the impact on the neighborhood. What advanced considerations are being given to the residents? You know, who are gonna be losing parking spots and all of that. And what's fair in this process? In terms of, of individuals being, you know, having now some privileged access to parking. In the residential neighborhoods. Y'all gonna give us any privileged access downtown to parking spaces when employees have to work? You know, downtown. So why can't you just come into the communities and take neighborhood parking spaces? We talked with Bridges uh when they were first coming on and one of our main concerns was parking and making sure. That they were gonna be addressing those things. We didn't know that they were gonna be given the right to now come and take parking from the community. Uh, without much input. So where are we with this? Is, is there an application or is this just a process we talking about? Or if there's an application, is there's a timeline? What, what's going on? Wh- where are we with this, this, this thing that we're talking about tonight?
So Bridges, uh Public Charter School has submitted an application. They've submitted a sustainable transportation plan and they've started their survey. But because we don't have all of the data from their survey, we've not yet processed their application. Cause that survey is telling us how the staff currently travel. And we need to use calculations, including proximity to Metro. Um, so the timeline is that D dot has. Sixty days or we're aiming to process something within sixty days. In reality. Based on a lot of pressure that we've had, we've been trying to move quicker. Um, but we have, we can let you know once we've received the full completed application. Um, and we are trying to maintain strong contact with the A and C. I did receive feedback from Commissioner Washington um to make sure that we reach out directly to the single member district. And also to uh make sure that the school has an opportunity to partner with the A and C first. Before they submit their application. Um, and I think that's really good, good feedback that we could update in terms of our process. But it wasn't something that was launched in the original guidance earlier this summer.
So now does the sixty days start from the date that you can see the full application or has the sixty days already started?
The sixty days technically wouldn't start until they, they've completed the application with all the materials. That being said, we've been trying to, to move faster than sixty days. So. Once we receive all the completed materials, so in the case of Bridges, it would just be additional survey responses. Um, we could issue permits within a week or two.
So I guess what I'm trying to find out and, and I, we don't want you to move too, too fast. Is uh assuming this whole sixty day thing. So then we will have an opportunity. To uh discuss this further at the September twenty eighth meeting, Commissioner Washington. Is that the idea?
I hope so, yes.
It, it, Ms. Pickett, is that the possible?
That is absolutely possible, but I, I am not. Guaranteeing that we will withhold the permits if everything else is ready until after that date.
Well, let me add this. Olivia, who is at Bridges, told me. She wanted to be on the calendar for the twenty eighth to explain it to the, to bring it to the commission before she completes her application. Because like I said, she felt like someone put the, what is the, the cart before the horse? Because she didn't get a chance to come to the commission about it.
I appreciate that. And I think that's a great illustration of the relationship that you already have with the school. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I, I have one other question, Chairman Edwards, if that's okay.
Right, yeah, you got the floor.
Um. Ms. Pickett. Has there any, has there been any attempt to try and encourage the schools and the city to provide funding? Uh, for uh memberships for bike shares to allow. Um, it, to allow teachers to use bike shares and then to put bike share parking at the schools?
I will have to get back to you on the specifics, but I'll include that in my follow-up notes. We do offer a bike share benefit. It might be a free annual bike share membership to all D C P S teachers. Maybe that was limited and doesn't still exist, but I'm pretty sure that existed last year. Uh, we also offer like two hundred dollars for teachers to just buy a bike outright. It's a limited amount, but. We offer a lot of that and the sustainable transportation plan is meant to encourage that. So. I will say the entire program is set up around trying to encourage mode shift. Holding the schools accountable for educating their teachers about different modes. Um. And trying to reduce the number, or definitely reducing the number of permits that we issue over time. So all those are built into the program. Uh, because our goals, as you see in Move D C and other places, are to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips.
I would appreciate that. I mean, but part of that would be making sure also that there is a, either a, a city, a. A bike rack that the city has purchased to put at the schools or a, uh, one of the public bike share racks. Also located conveniently located. So that, that, you know, cause if there's not one conveniently located at the school, then it doesn't serve the right purpose.
I understand. Yeah, thank you for that feedback.
All right, so, so um if you could, if you could help me, I think in terms of this conversation and, and, and what I've been listening to. Uh, I heard a great idea and a great concept that sort of working in. Uh, Commissioner Lucio's area with regard to public charters and their efforts to sort of look at existing space. In the area to try to see if that space could be used for uh parking as opposed to taking public parking. And so Commissioner Washington, I guess, is the two, i- in, in coordination with them. I'm trying to figure out if there are vacant. Areas close to bridges that you can see probably need improvement. I think those are things that we need to try to look at in terms of saying, hey, you know, this is an alternative. You could help the community. You could do. You know, uh, as opposed to taking parking spaces. So if we could have that kind of dialogue. Between now and say the twenty eighth, Ms. Pickett, I think we could probably uh. Cause it sounds like what I'm hearing you say though, that uh you've been, you've been very nice and courteous and sort of coming to us. But a decision is probably could be made before September the twenty eighth though.
Well, with the, with the feedback that you've given me, I will certainly, if the school is saying that we wanna wait until after the twenty eighth and you're saying that. Then I think we, we would have no problem abiding by that. Um. So, so thank you. I'm, I'm happy to do that and wait until the twenty eighth, given the information that you've shared, assuming that Olivia confirms that. Uh, there's something else I was just gonna quickly add. Oh, the other thing I was gonna add is some, some A and Cs have told us very helpfully. Hey, you know, there's a stretch of parking that's not R P P. It's two-hour parking or it's not metered parking. But it's like loading only. Maybe you could allow teachers to park there. So if there are areas that you know of that might be not R P P, but that you might say would be better for teachers to do on-street parking. Please let us know because we could potentially add that to their zones.
There is, I have my hand up, Commissioner Edwards. Can I speak? There is a um, um, price grocery store that sits up off of um Farragut Street. This gentleman has all this space of property that he's not utilizing. And um. I don't know if any of the schools have talked to him because I've had problems with him housing. Uh, broken down towed cars there, which is illegal and he couldn't do. But it would seem like to me, maybe, you know, the schools could try to partner with him. To try to figure out how they could legally use his property to park. I mean, it's just in walking distance. To where um the school is. Um. Also, now that Brick, that D C bilingual has added all of the parking spaces on their premises. That's freeing up the parking lot that's at First and Riggs. That could usually, could be used for parking by Bridges as well. But I wanna go back to Commissioner Lucio when we were talking about, you know, the legislation and it's been passed and everything. I mean, I'm inclined to think that the, the working group that you have, that you are part of needs to know about this. I think Robert White, I'm not sure if he knows and he's over the A and Cs. But I think for me, and once this really gets out, that it could be something that the council really needs to look at again. In all fairness to having the schools have a privilege to get parking for their employees.
Commissioner Washington, I would a hundred percent agree with you.
And not have anybody else.
Yep, I'm happy to bring this to that group.
Yes.
If you can share the council's law or whatever information you may have with that.
That, that would be very helpful.
Yes, it would be.
I will share the legislation and there was also a rulemaking that went through the council rulemaking process that just was finalized at the beginning of this month. So it, it has gone before council for a first and second hearing recently.
Yeah, but see, I know, we know how things go through council. They sign off and that's it. They don't even read what they're signing off half the time. So we need to, with that, that's where I am with it.
Okay.
You know.
Sure.
So, yes.
All right, um, so uh any further discussion on this matter?
No, I'm done.
All right.
I'm done. I mean, because it's just overwhelming for me. Trust me.
Ms. Pickett, Ms. Pickett, we really appreciate your uh patience and endurance here with us this evening. Uh, and uh Commissioner Washington, I know she's gonna look at work on her end to try to work with Bridges to. Try to get them to look at some alternatives. And if on your end, in terms of closing the gap, you could sort of make sure. Uh, help us to, you know, make sure that uh they, that every, all the I's have been dotted and all the T's crossed. We would certainly appreciate that. And then we look forward to seeing you back at a meeting on the twenty eighth of September. Is, is that right?
Thank you. Either myself or my colleague Joe Curran will be there. So um, thank you so much for having me. Thank you for your patience and understanding. I know we're going through this new process together, but I'm really grateful for your feedback and confident that we can be flexible and find a solution that works.
Okay, and you're gonna send us the uh legislation?
I have a lot of follow-up items, yes.
Okay.
Send you.
All right.
Information on the working group, how the information got out, the number of Bridges spaces, bike share benefits, legislation and rulemaking.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, so uh commissioners, um, I think we have uh. Done our job for tonight. I think we've covered all of our issues. Um.
Would you concern, community concern?
This is a special meeting.
Special meeting, there's no community concern.
I have an emergency, I have an emergency situation regarding Teddy the Blind Man.
Well, then you've got, you need to bring that to your, your A and C.
A and C Commissioner.
Directly.
But y'all were the ones who voted to, as a group, I think would be helpful because this guy, he can't cross South Dakota Avenue anymore.
Well, we can't, we can't do it at this meeting, Mr.
We can't take any official action.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, we can't vote on anything tonight that wasn't on the agenda. Um, you feel free to reach out. Feel free to reach out to your commissioner in your, and, and, and ask for. And a sp- a special emergency meeting or whatever, if you feel the issue is important enough for us to do that. And then we'll sort of go through the process.
Um. Yeah, D dot was supposed to do something in ninety days and ninety days is up and he, he. Okay, bye. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, all right, Commissioner.
Um, um, I'm sorry, real quick, before we log off, I just wanna make a note that I just put in the chat. Um, hold on. Um, I just put in the link to the application. For what we were just talking about. So if you wanna pull it up before we close out the meeting and I'm about to put in. The um legislation from the District of Columbia. That's the second one.
Commissioner Lucio, can you email that to us, please, as commissioners? Cause I'm. Don't wanna write that down. Can you?
You don't have to write it down. Click on the link and save it.
I know, but just, could you please?
I'll do that. For those not tech savvy, I'll do it.
Thank you.
But, but I, but I did find it, so.
Okay, great. I appreciate that.
Parking zone. Yep, I did find it.
I appreciate that.
Uh, all right, uh commissioners, uh it is now seven twenty-two. Um. There is, all of our business has been taken care of, I think. And so uh at this point, uh.
It's actually eight twenty-two, Commissioner Washington.
Oh, 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 oh. I'm on the central town. Eight twenty-two, okay. All right. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye. And let me do this one.